All right, it is 5:30. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. We'll go ahead and get started with our work session for six o'clock council meeting. Approval of minutes, there were no changes. Any questions? Public hearings, resolution 25 to 11, approved request for on and off premise beer and wine for Yalupha. LL C doing business as Noraya. And at 2027 Belt Line Road Southwest, Cater, Alabama. No changes. Any questions? Resolution 25 to 12, approve M U B expenditure of $2,810,612 for FY26 boring and trenching contract. No changes. Any questions? Resolution 25 to 13, accept A D M grant of $375,000 for recycling truck. Any questions? Resolution 25 to 14, approve CID HVAC replacement for police department in the amount of $1,000. Any questions? Resolution 25 to 15, approve recreational trails grant for Denz Moore Slough Trail Extension.
No changes.
No changes. Any questions? Resolution 25 to 16, adopt annual transportation plan for rebuild Alabama Act funds.
Questions.
Any questions? Resolution 25 to 17, approve change order for construction at Point Myler Event Center.
There's no change to best my knowledge.
Then no change. Any questions? Resolution 25 to 18, approve Cater Recreation Center for construction, change order number three.
There's no change. That's increases the contract 24 days and increases the amount 294,806. That's a change order. There's several change orders. It's 100 and something pages and...
Yeah, we're still in that as part of the contingency, I believe. We're still...
Yeah, as my understanding is still, that's something dollar would have to... I think we're still within budget.
Out of the under control contingency, yeah. So it's part of the bid that we're not approving, but yeah. All right, any questions? Resolution 25 to 19, approve Dash by Day Smart Recreation Software.
There's no change. It's a $10,536 expenditure for one year.
Any questions? I believe it was a one-year commitment.
Yes, yes.
And then we had an addition, Tommy. Uh, ordinance 254612, approve renaming Ryan Drive Southwest to Steve Perkins Drive Southwest.
Yeah, this one before the planning commission in April. And the applicant had three, uh, had one condition to get three more signatures. And they have turned in three more signatures. So they are ready for y'all to hit this.
And this, uh, the big clear is an ordinance with...
Yes, the street name changes in ordinance, yes.
Which required, but...
Yep.
Any questions? All right, that is it. We'll get started at six o'clock.
Public meeting in order. The main show, we'll leave it on indication.
Father, we are grateful for this day to come to you and we thank you for our council and our city. We ask your wisdom and your strength as we make decisions that affect our citizens and we give you all the glory and praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. For the reasons of the Bible, how we now have to save us in America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Here. 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 All right, our first item is agenda-related comment. Is Mr. Barrick, you have to sign in.
So, in the minutes, what happened to August 6th, or August 18th, 10:00 a.m.?
Don't think we have that on. Yeah, does that show up?
Resolution F, approve a change order for construction, $38,000. There is no, as I read through that resolution, there is no actual document that it refers to. It says, "A will execute the attach," and there is no attachment.
I'm not sure we'll have Hunter discuss what that's for when the, when the agenda item comes up.
Okay, so we're going to wait until Hunter describes. Now, how did Hunter Allen get in the approval business, or recommendation business, for something that looks like a city engineer requirement?
I think multiple people were together on those items, but I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
She did speak to those last week.
Yeah.
Both of those.
Okay, so for $38,000 for items that we know of, is the verbiage in the resolution. So what do we not know of?
If there's further issues that need to be fixed or changed, gentlemen.
There's a lot of guesswork here going, gentlemen.
You know something until it happens.
Well, it would be helpful if we had the attachment that explained what these were for, therefore we could make an assessment that says, yes, verily, $38,000 is a good price tag, or not. That did, that, per the resolution, this item fell out of the bid. It was not in the bid.
That's correct.
Okay. So this is additional cost to the city for $38,000. And the last thing, ordinance number, the last, the ordinance reading, first reading, how did that get on the agenda?
I have a sketch and I have a question.
Okay. So the councilman can request items like this to go before the council?
If it comes to me from another council member, in this case, they can, and they have a city clerk.
Okay, so when was the last time you received a request like this from Mr. McMasters?
He's asked for things to be put on the agenda.
Well, you've had five years to do it, but when was the last time that you can remember what he did?
I can't remember things that happened to me yesterday, but it has happened over five years.
Okay. And the reason I bring that up is resolutions are a pretty easy thing to put together. We can put one that's not fully complete on the agenda and get approved probably today. Or we could create resolutions that actually have an impact for our citizens that would not necessarily be outrageously expensive.
Yeah, I don't really know what you're asking, but I would say, I have, I think I've done this every time, if there's been a request from another council member, put something on the agenda.
Okay, is that the only way that a resolution get forwarded up here?
No, things come from, through kind of the normal process. I can request to see it and I could ask that it be taken off if I don't want it to be. But if a council member has a specific item they want on there, I always, I put it on at least once. There was one item that Mr. Pepper asked me to put on multiple times and I only did once.
Do you happen to remember, Mr. McMasters, when was the last time you put forward something like that? Yeah, I thought not, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move into the agenda. First is approval of minutes. We'll take all these together. Questioned by Mr. Masters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Minutes are approved for zero. Public hearings, resolution 25211, approved request for on and off, Crimis Beer and Wine Boarding, Delfa, XCA LLC doing business as Noriah, at 2027 Beltline Road, Southwest, to K.R. Alabama, 356201, board.
They have met all requirements and we recommend approval.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak on this, or a public hearing now, if there's anyone here to speak on this item, you speak now. All right, seeing no one here to speak, we'll consider the public hearing closed. Questioned by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye?
Aye.
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 Resolution 25211 approved for zero. Resolution, resolution 25212 approved. MUV expenditure of $2,810,612 for FY '26 boring and trenching contract.
Yeah, Mr. Ladner, Council, Jimmy Evans, Decatur Utilities. This is for annual boring and trenching contract. This is for the installation of all of our underground utilities in gas, water, and electric. Also includes, this includes new installations as well as repair replacement work. We opened bids on August the 14th. We had two responsive bidders and we've recommended awarding it to Harmer's Contracting.
Questioned by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye? Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 25212 approved for zero. Resolution 25213, accept A.M. grant of $375,000 for recycling.
Good evening. Wanda Tyler, landfill and recycling. Earlier this year, I applied for a grant, which I do quite often, but this is for A.M. to approve two recycling trucks, but we got awarded one for $375,000. I'm here before you so we can accept this grant and also, you know, buy a truck.
Questioned by Mr. Masters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Thank you for allowing me to connect.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Aye? Aye.
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 Thank you.
Resolution 25213 approved for zero. Resolution 25214 approved CID H back replacement for police department, the amount of $41,000.
Kurt Johnson, Building Maintenance. This would be approval for a split unit in the back of CID department.
So, questioned by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution 25 to 14, approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 15, approved recreational trails grant for Dinsmore Slough Trail Extension.
Yes, this is an application for an extension to Dinsmore Slough Trail. This is a recreational trails grant. It's a $338,000 grant. It will require an 82,720 match. There's also some additional non-reimbursable expenses of $240,000, bringing the total city investment to $322,720, and this is just an application, so we will come back if awarded.
So moved. Questioned by Mr. Pike, second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Alan, this is just the application. We're not accepting anything at this point.
This is just the application at this point.
If we are in commitment, if we...
If, yeah, if awarded.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution 25 to 15, approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 16, the Non-Annual Transportation Plan for Rebuild Alabama Act Fund.
Good evening. Dawn Rundiger, Finance. Again, as we discussed at the work session last week, this resolution is to assign the estimated revenues from the Rebuild Alabama Act for road projects needed in the city. Let me clarify again that this is not the only resurfacing that the city will be budgeting this year. It is, however, a requirement of the legislative act for the city to adopt and publish the plan for tax revenues generated by this act. Again, the revenues forecast are for $425,000, and the projects selected are shown in the resolution attachment.
So, questioned by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution 25 to 16, approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 17, approved change order for construction at Point Mall or Defense Center.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and just start and provide some clarity to the initial question asked by the public, and this was attached in the document. It was the quote that we received from Dobbs and Company, the electric contractor on the job. The feeds destroyed during the demolition of concrete in the room that will be the new restrooms. There were four feeders in this slab that were cut, RPK, RPB, RPA, and LPA. These feed multiple panels in the facility. There's, the length of these feeders ranged from 450 feet to 280 feet, so this, this is to repair that and run new conduit in the facility. So, this was, the quote was $38,666, and from my understanding, we were told that the construction out there had halted until this could be completed. Do you guys have any questions about this?
So, is there a motion? So, questioned by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye. Resolution 25 to 17, approved three to one. Resolution 25 to 18, approved Decatur Recreation Center for construction, change order number three.
This change order, it's 21 total change orders in this document. The total amount is $294,806. It does increase the contract sum, however, it is paid for within the contingency of the contract, so it does not put the contract over budget. This is the reason the contingency was built into this. It goes through, if you look, if you want to look through it, it goes through each one individually. There also are actually some credits in this change order that come from the revision with ALDOT, with the entrance revisions that were in there. $127,000 of this was due to schedule impacts for unsuitable soils, and this analysis was done on June 30th by Encore Group, which is also in this document. Any questions about this?
So, motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 25 to 18, approved three to one. Resolution 25 to 19, approved Dash by Day Smart Recreation Software.
Dash by Day Smart is a recreation software. It provides multiple solutions for our department ranging across the entire city. This will help us enhance our efforts with registrations for classes, sports leagues, camps, and special events. It'll also help us with reservations, with booking venues in town. We have a lot of event spaces and facilities that we let the public reserve. With this, people will be able to go online, book, and pay in one place. Currently, we are having citizens that they fill out a document online, and they have to turn in checks and cash to our facilities to register for sports leagues. All of our scheduling and league communication will also be done through this platform. It will help us streamline memberships and passes for our facilities, including the new pickleball facility and the new recreational center. This will, our citizens' memberships will live inside of this portal where they can scan in when they get to the facilities as well. It also has a built-in concession stand application that allows to go digital at all concession stands and allow us to stop doing cash. Our facilities, we currently have workers that are running cash at night, which is not necessarily conducive for safety of our employees and our city. So, overall, this is a one-stop-shop recreational software, and if you have more questions, I'd be more than happy to walk the...
Does it work with Aquadon Pool?
Yes, it will.
So, motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? So, Hunter, are we going to stop doing cash at, I mean, concession stands in all situations? Are we going to discontinue that?
The ultimate goal would be to stop taking cash, and it's not, I understand that people like to use cash, but the ultimate goal is for safety and transparency over all of our funds and the money that's coming into the department.
So, Kid at Park, who's got a $5 deal, they won't be able to use that?
The ultimate goal would be to transition away from that, yes.
But not, not with this approval or not?
No.
Correct. This approval does not, does not hinder that.
I'm just talking from the future.
The concession stand application that's built into this works with cash drawers and allows the acceptance of cash. So, this, this is just, with, this keeps it in scope that it creates that possibility, and it allows more transparency over our, over everything that's coming in.
I get that. I guess my concern is future, I mean, and I understand the convenience or the safety aspect that you spoke of, but the future, when we, you know, again, Kid has $10 or $5 or whatever, that concerns me, that, and I know that this doesn't impact this tonight, but that's for future discussion, but anyway, I just want to get that on the table.
Yeah, I understand, and that's something that, you know, we'll, we'll come to council with, and we'll make sure that's approved before we make that final decision.
Well, I won't be here first, too.
All right, well, I'll reach out to you, Jake.
You could, you could come speak on that.
Um...
I agree with that. I'm sorry, we have a motion in the second. Any other discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution 25 to 19, approved four to zero. Moving to ordinances, ordinance first reading, ordinance 254612, approved renaming Ryan Drive, Sound Quest to Steve Perkins Drive, Southwest.
Good evening. Tommy, with the City of Decatur Planning Department, and the applicant is requesting to rename this street from Ryan Drive to Steve Perkins Drive. This went before the planning commission in April, and all conditions have been made.
And it was unanimously approved?
United.
I'd like to make a motion for immediate consideration for second. All right, we have a motion for immediate consideration by Mr. Jackson, the second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion on immediate consideration? All right, roll call. Aye.
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 Immediate consideration is approved with a vote of four to zero. We have a motion on the ordinance. Questioned by Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? I'll just simply say we had to get 75 percent. Can we clarify that? We have a policy...
We have a street name policy where you have to get 75 percent of the people who stay on this street to change their name, and they were able to get 76 percent.
Okay, and I would just say my comment is if people on the street or wherever want to do something in the city that's reasonable and for y'all to afford people to say that, 75 percent or more, that's democracy.
Correct. I agree.
Let me say this, that we have dealt with this for quite some time now.
Yes, sir.
It is something that, it kind of, there was fluctuation between residents saying, I do want it, then I don't want it, and then now I do want it. I just want to thank the people who have reached out to me from Ryan Drive to ask me questions about it, and just want to say thank you for their participation in this. Apparently, there are people on that street who take this as a move in the right direction, so I want to just commend everyone who participated in this, and you, Tommy, you did so much to help in the furtherance of this, so I just appreciate all that you've done and everybody who was involved in. Any other discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Orders to be made, resolution approved four to zero. Next council work session will be held on September 8, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Next regular council meeting will be done on September 15, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. We'll move into our public comments, and first is Mike Stovall. I'm going to let all your directors get out of here first.
We finally got the name changed. That's great.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, the right to vote is precious, almost sacred. It is the most powerfulest nonviolent tool we have in a democracy. Make sure your voice is heard and your vote is counted. That was by none other than John Lewis. In a democracy, I'm not going to talk about what you think I'm going to talk about, but in a democracy, the foundation of a democracy is voting. But when your vote is not cast, then that's messing with the freedoms that our founding fathers left with us. Even though when Abraham Lincoln looked out at a divided nation, and he saw how divided it was, he took time to try to figure out, how can I bring this nation back together again? And he did the best he could do, and that's why we have Thanksgiving. But I'm going back to my subject about voting. When our vote doesn't count, it hurt. I've been teaching teenagers for a long time in this city, over 20 years I've been, and my biggest thing was, is to try to get young people to participate in this thing called democracy. And they always tell me the same thing, my vote does not matter, so why should I vote? So, when I brought in, or we brought in different teenagers, or different young people, adults, to come in and vote, some voted for the first time, and they feel like the vote did not even count. Then we go over to St. James, where voters were purged off the list, and now those people are feeling like, why should we vote in this city when our vote doesn't count? Some might say, our city is messed up. Some of you up there might say, the protests has messed it up. Some back here might say, you all messed it up. But what I would say, what messed our city up is leadership, number one, and what messed our city up is greed, number two, and number three, you won't like this, whiteness messed our city up. Now, put that in paper.
Did you all read that 284-page document that was attached to that whore construction thing?
Not the whole, no.
Did anybody read it?
No.
Okay, there's some interesting things that come out of that. One is some of the key players. GMC LLC is the architect, which is funded by, or funded your campaign, Mr. McMasters. Whore Construction was the contractor, and then FIGHT, which is listed as the owner contact on page 12 of that document.
Correct.
Okay, and that's where you work?
Yes.
And you also funded, or he also funded his account, or his campaign, and your campaign also. You've got this year a significant amount of money from FIGHT. We found out there were some unsuitable soils and a problem back in April, and it took us this long to figure it out that we needed to have a change order to make all this thing get fixed. On August 18th, Hunter Allen became the point of contact. It had been Mr. Pruitt representing the city. Who's representing the city, or had been representing the city all since January 6?
I think you missed the name of the tissue that had been...
Well, Hunter Allen wasn't here.
So, Carl.
Okay, so Carl is listed on exactly two emails, one on August 19th, when he suggested Hunter take over that responsibility from him, and one other. So, the engineer, as a city engineer, is the only one email contact in 284 pages of documentation talking about changes to this facility that we're spending $45 million originally. Now, it's up to another 530K, as I read it.
Yeah, we also have a construction manager that's managing that.
Who's that?
Fire Construction.
Okay, yeah.
Is the construction manager, so, yeah, there's plenty of people, but then I don't know what's going on there. It's actually gone really well at this point, so.
Well, that's debatable if you read through some of the documentation, because it's increased another 20 some odd days, 28 days, I believe. It's now going to be complete on July 29th to 26th, if everything goes correctly.
Maybe we can control the weather better on the next project.
Well, maybe we could have done a better soil analysis, too. The other thing is, there's a coordination and approval process. This listed on every one of those change documents, and it says, the question is, has this been approved by all the stakeholders? And the City of Decatur, I would think, is a stakeholder in that process. Not one of those change documents is approved by the City of Decatur, not one. Okay, that is not the way to run a railroad development. That's how you have waste, fraud, and abuse. That's how you have Fight Industries.
Fight Building Company.
Whatever you work for. So, I think there's room for improvement, and I think you should all read these documents before you go ahead and approve them. The other thing I'll tell you is that two of you on the dais right now already have a defense complaint in from me. Two more of you are going to have it after this one. Thank you.
All right, anything else in the council? All right, we are adjourned.